Call the meeting to order, and I'll call upon Commissioner Schaefer to lead us in the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the Board of Commissioners. This is a public meeting, available for viewing to the public, we're keeping a record as well. Do we have any awards, recognition, and correspondence?
I do not.
None.
Okay. Minutes of the May 19, 2021 meeting?
I would move for approval of the minutes from May 19, 2021, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, additions to the agenda, I have two modifications I'm making in the agenda. One, three actually, one is that we will move item nine, the ARA stimulus funding plan, up to number two to immediately follow the adoption of the county budget.
It's on there.
Has he already done it?
Yeah, Doug's on it.
Oh, okay. All right. We also have, we'll have the recommendation to purchase a water truck, what item, what number will that be now?
Want to look at that?
It's number six.
Six, okay, that will be number six. Mr. Fellows will do that. And we have a proposal.
Number 10.
Item number 10 is community rewards for stimulus, okay? And Joe and John, Commissioner Schaefer will be making that, okay? Any other additions to the agenda?
None.
Okay, thank you Doug for doing all that.
Very quickly, too.
Very quickly, and throughout the meeting Commissioner Schaefer will keep me on track, since I don't have a copy. All right. Is there any public input, other than items that we're preparing to discuss as a board? Hearing none, we'll go into hearing mode to discuss the adoption of the county budget. Robert, Robert, are you going to do that?
Yep. Good morning Commissioners, Robert Paul, CFO, here to present staff report on the approved budget. This is a copy of the approved budget. The budget was approved.
This will be Exhibit A.
Yeah. The budget was approved at our budget meeting in April. There were, and is adjusted by any suggestions that were made by the Budget Committee. It's before you this morning for adoption. Total appropriations in the approved budget are $117,261,126. And the total overall budget is $123,716,876. Are there any questions?
I do not, but I do want to thank you and your staff for all the hard work you put into this. This clearly is a labor of love, and thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
I would like to also chime in, it's my first time around on the budget. I probably put Robert through a lot of questions and tasks and searches that were probably not totally necessary, but it did educate me. I have a greater respect for the budget and how it's put together and the Budget Committee. And just thank you for all of the help you gave me, for sure.
You're welcome, thank you.
For the record, we'll need a new copy of this for official action. Okay? All right, other questions? All right, we'll go out of hearing mode. Any comments from the public relative to the budget? Comments from the Commissioners?
I've made mine, thank you again.
All right.
Yep.
Then I'm willing to accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion, do we adopt the budget for 2122?
Aye, second motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Can you please adopt the orders, because that includes a lot more than just the budget.
My apologies, I will amend my motion to adopt budget order 2022-01.
The second agrees to the amendment and continues.
And everyone in favor of that, say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Okay, item two, Mr. Fellows?
No.
What?
We changed it, remember? Not item number two, it's going to be the stimulus funding?
Oh yes, okay. I don't have a copy of that, so. All right, the second item is the stimulus funding plan, ARA funding plan document. No, I know what it says. I'll read portions of it. Actually, I think in light of the fact that it's for a fairly sizable amount of money, I think I'll read all of it. Board members are being asked to authorize some of the funding from the first half of the AR stimulus funding. The focus will be on the fact this is one-time funding. In that regard, no provisions are being made for expenditures that will require ongoing funding to maintain them. Two of the largest proposed expenditures are $2 million for the pipeline project in the West County that will bring significant new water from the Columbia River and preserve critical groundwater. It will also provide water for recharging the aquifer and contribute to enhancing agricultural production. The second major allocation will be up to $2 million for public works, which experienced a dramatic loss of revenue during the pandemic due to reduced travel. Much of the funding for public works comes from gasoline tax revenues. The Commissioners are planning $650,000 in funding for joint investments with local communities. These are ongoing partnerships with local communities, assistance in restoring the economy or assistance for very small communities with limited resources. In some cases, one or more of these communities will not receive any ARA funds such as Meacham. Additional consideration will be given at some point to funding for long-term maintenance projects within the county that qualify under ARA guidelines, which are part of the county's long-term maintenance plan. The long-term maintenance plan was developed to assist the county in avoiding deferred maintenance obligations. I would also like to point out that, well, I guess I already did, that the money for public works represents a loss of revenue, so.
I would move for the adoption of BCC 2021-046.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Kind of a tough decision to vote whether to accept the funds or not.
Okay. Commissioner Schaefer, I'll just rely on you to tell me what we're doing next.
Number three is the water truck purchase.
Mr. Fellows?
Good morning Commissioners, Tom Fellows, U.K. County Public Works Director. What you have before you right now is part of our ongoing effort to upgrade and improve our fleet. We, every year we go out, we get approval from the Board of Commissioners so that we can go out with our FPs on a list of equipment that we're always in need of or looking for. What this water truck represents is one of the items on that list from the 21 budget year. It's a 2008 international water truck from Woodpecker Truck. It's for a total amount of $72,500. And this will be an actual addition to our fleet moving forward and trying to maintain our drive.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
I like the fact that it's coming from Woodpecker here locally. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of, to award the contract for purchase of the 2008 international water truck from Woodpecker in the amount of $72,500.
Second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next item?
Number four, the asphalt paving machine purchase.
Yeah, this has also been on our list. Humberts in Oak Free Water actually have this machine they purchased a few years back. It is an older machine, however, it's only got 5,000 hours actually on it. It matches up very nicely with the machine that we already have. And in our estimation, this is going to give us between another seven to 10 years of operational capability for this, for our paving program. The difference is machines that we've been looking at are certainly much newer machines, but they've used machine in this caliber runs anywhere from $80,000 to $150,000, depending on what it is. They generally run anywhere from 10,000 hours of operating hours. So we feel that even though this is an older machine, it's in excellent condition and we think that this will certainly put our program and continue us moving forward for a number of years with the money left in depth. They're asking price on that for $50,000 and we saw all the requests from departments, we don't think.
I would move for approval of the request and the successful bidder of Humbert Asphalt on the $15,000 for the asphalt paving machine.
Second.
Note again that this is a local purchase.
Yes, it is a local purchase, right, on Oak Free Water, so, yeah.
Commissioner, one would say it's not Humbert Asphalt, it's Humbert Rock Rushing.
Right.
That's right.
Before your vote, I will again note that we'll sign a separate document to accept, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. All right, item number five is the equipment replacement list for public works.
The list that we put forward is our new updated list for the 22 budget year now that we have a budget that we're operating off of. This list was actually produced based on our budgeting process through the years. So what this list will do is this will allow us to go out for our FPs for certain pieces of equipment will still have to come to the work for approval for purchase. But sometimes, especially when we're getting the used equipment, it, this can cut some work, it can be ten days off in the process. And equipment dealers really appreciate that because if they have an opportunity for sale, they certainly like to take those opportunities forward as soon as possible. So this actually gives us better opportunity to make sure that we don't lose out on equipment purposes that are out there.
I'd like to thank Tom for, he spent quite a bit of time with me in multiple meetings on this list. He's put a lot of thought into it over the years. It's kind of nice to see how it's evolved in a professional manner, and I'd like to thank Tom for that. But with that said, I'd like to make a motion for approval of our adopt order number RD 2021-03.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, this is a formal approval of an item from the ARA funding priority list that we approved earlier. Mr. Fellows, would you handle that one as well, since you're representing us?
Yeah, Commissioner Murdock, looking some time back, has raised interest in a water truck purchase for, I believe it was the fire department commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong. And Woodpecker Truck has a really nice little unit. It's a 99 international with a 4,000 gallon water tank. It's, the truck only has 26,240 miles on it, so it's a very low mileage truck. We looked it over as a possibility for the road department, however, it's, due to the age and what's happening with emissions for road department standards, we felt that it wouldn't, we wouldn't have enough service life left for our needs. But this really is, it's a nicely set up truck and has all the bells and whistles and would certainly need a, has a good addition, I think, for their firefighting. Excuse me, correction, it's a 36,000 gallon water tank, not a 4,000.
Thank you, Mr. Fellows, I would point out that some years ago, Joe DiMarche, a member of the Meacham community, first approached me, and I've had others approach me as well. There is no real council or government structure in Meacham, and yet they have needs. They did not get anything this time around from the federal government, and yet they're an isolated community in need of a dependable source of water in the case of fire. So I think this is a, I appreciate your work on this, Mr. Fellows.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of purchase of the 1999 international water truck.
At second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item number seven, body armor purchase, Captain Williamson, I believe you're doing this.
Good morning, this is David Williamson, Sheriff's Office. Request this morning of four replacements body armor. Body armor has a life of five years and the manual work movement exists. So either this could be replaced, a number of vests and carriers that have been inspired will amount for the $7,244 each. That's for, correctly, six or seven.
Questions?
None, but I would make a motion to approve the replacement of the body armor for $7,344.84.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Property bids, council, are you taking care of that?
I am, but if you can skip this item for just now, it's going to be a while. And go ahead with two, public health.
Wouldn't you say, are we skipping it and tabling it to the next meeting, or?
Just moving it down to, right after public health.
Gotcha.
That way Joe would have had to sit through your opening of the bid.
Ah, Joe appreciates that, I'm sure.
Okay. Joe, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Number nine.
Positionist first, is that right?
Yes.
So this is a position that was previously approved by the board for our normal health program and hire another environmental health specialist. We posted the conducted interviews and we have selected a candidate who happens to be on our temporary contact tracers working in our upstairs area. And we are seeking approval to have them start sooner than the original July 1st and actually have them slide to that position right away.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion for the creation of one FTE as environmental health specialist, one or two as effective June 1, 2021.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go to item 10, which is in addition to the agenda. It's a community rewards program proposed by public health. The funding source for this would be a special allocation which has come from the state to continue to promote the importance of vaccinations. So without further ado, I'll refer to either Commissioner Schaefer or Joe, who are bringing this to us.
I'm going to defer to Joe, because he explained it very well yesterday.
All right. So the current incentives that are out there that the state are putting forth, with like the take your shot work in, are incentives aimed at individual of getting vaccinations involved. Whether to receive the vaccination or not is an individual choice, the impact has a wider community effect. And so what we are proposing with these dollars which are aimed at providing incentives is to actually incentivize some community organizations, partners, nonprofits in the area to help promote the idea of vaccinations. And this ideally would result, based on the revised zip codes right now, that entities, nonprofits that are paid in these activities would receive essentially a reward payment once the threshold is met from these dollars. And so it could be a way to incentivize the community to make this decision and in a way to provide benefits across the board and as that community needs, has needs for. They'd be able to use these funds as they see fit on that threshold to that. And I think you're looking at a document that was there. And as I pull that up, so I'm looking at the same one here. The intent on here is to provide a kind of a base reward for each area. We employ with the idea of a 5,000 base reward, but I like the way the dollars look for the 10,000 as opposed to that, with the rest of it being a population base for that zip code, breaking it out across the zip codes. It does hold some back to administer the program and then the 10% activities section is intended to be ability to cover costs, to reimburse costs for entities accrue through the activities that they're putting forth to promote vaccinations.
The $5,000 on there is only based on a view of the left-hand column and without awareness of the base reward, so disregard the five.
Yeah, when we initially put it together, we started with five, and I just didn't like how the totals.
No, no, I certainly totally agree. And what's the source of funding?
So this source would be the $590,097.40 that, through the contract, through the DAS of the state, that my understanding is the intent of these funds are to provide incentives for vaccinations. Doug can speak to that.
Can we assume that you and Commissioner Schaefer will come up with guidelines that we can share with whomever asks?
Yeah, we're working on that right now, and we envision both kind of a guideline process along with probably some of the cues. The way we envision this process, like we're working, is organizations would kind of, you know, send an email or submit through a form of an intent to participate in this program. We will have a mechanism in place to set up reimbursement of some costs. And then once the zip code has reached the threshold of 60% of the population vaccinated, there would be like a, maybe a two-week window for these organizations to submit some information about what they did to attain this goal. And then the reward obviously split amongst those organizations within that zip code.
What percentage is that, 60?
Yeah, 60%, yeah, of vaccinated people.
And we chose 60 because we wanted this to be something that was reasonably attainable for the locality and our, our rates are lower than we would like. Obviously, you know, our goal would be 100%, but we felt 60% was a reasonable accommodation that would provide a lot of additional protection within those communities as well as be something attainable for these entities.
Questions?
Go back, please, to the guidelines that you had up there.
This one?
Yeah, thank you. So the, I guess I'm confused, if you have to reapply for the funds after you hit 60%, how does that make it so you don't spend money out of pocket?
So the intent is the, upon that first page where it's got 10% activities at just under $51,000 listed, the intent is that would be a pot of money that could be used to reimburse costs.
That's the on the page, I'm looking there.
There.
Created by these entities, or reduce out-of-pocket costs. The, our stating from Doug, we have to have entities provide us with some details about how they, how they, how they contribute to these goals in order for them to receive these dollars and have no additional restrictions or reporting requirements clipped on these dollars after they get them out.
Okay, just so I'm clear, so before there's a event, they submit their plan, they receive the funds, and then they can operate the plan? Or does the plan go into operation before they get the funds?
So it could go either way. The pot of 51,000 is intended to be for reimbursed costs, and so that might be an entity who has an idea but does not have the funds to make it happen. They could submit that to us and we could provide them some funds out of that pot. And they go forth, they do their program at a point in the future when their zip code reaches that 60% threshold, they would submit some basic information to us about what they did to attribute to that goal. And then the reward total would be released to that zip code and each entity that participated in those activities would receive an equal share of that money.
Other questions? Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval for the, what do you want to call that?
Community rewards program.
Yes, the community rewards program.
I'll second the motion for further discussion.
Okay, further discussion.
I guess my concern here is, and maybe you can answer that, is how do we incentivize them to get this, the vaccination sooner? To me this, and again, I could be totally off-base, because I don't, I don't know the plan. But it seems to me that the target was to get people vaccinated as soon as possible.
And I think that what this program is designed to do is to have the communities incentivize their citizens to get the vaccination.
And then?
Did Joe hear, I don't know if Joe heard you, Doug.
I did not, did not hear you, Doug.
Basically, this is to incentivize groups to get their fellow citizens within their community to get the vaccination as soon as possible. So it's basically a lottery for the nonprofits. And so the nonprofits would be the ones that would be carrying out their own program to try to get vaccinations of their citizens.
So for instance, if the, and I'm just throwing out names, if the Roundup Association said, hey, I want to do an event and to get people vaccinated here in Pendleton, and it triggered that 60% mark, then they would receive those funds, is that correct, Joe?
I mean, if we.
What I would make is, you know, any other organization that was also participating and conducting some sort of these activities, we would essentially split those funds.
So it's not limited to nonprofits?
Nonprofits, civic organizations, even municipalities could participate, chamber.
Businesses.
I don't think businesses, I think, I don't think that was probably discussed too much, but I don't.
I think chambers.
Be awkward for business, unless it's.
Yeah, chambers.
Well, Dan's question, Commissioner Doran's question relates to expediency. Am I safe in assuming that if at some point in time, meeting a standard is no longer relevant, then the program would not continue, is that right?
That is correct. Well, the funds for this expire in December, I believe, so.
Yeah.
Happened before that.
So they'll be expiring anyways, so. So what happens to the, and you may already cover this, but what happens to the funds if nobody reaches that threshold? if nobody reaches that threshold?
So, couple of ideas we tossed around is, obviously, if somebody reaches that threshold, we can recalculate the pots for, and just give it to that zip code. Ultimately, if the funds aren't used, they get returned back to the state and back to the feds, but I believe that's where they originated. Additionally, some of the costs, my department is, that are going, do qualify for submission of these funds, and so we could look at ways of supplementing there to keep those funds going back. But, you know, current data we have is some of these, some of these localities are not, you know, really far away. We've got healing at 50% right now, we've got mietum at 44, we've got hermesin at 43. You know, some of these zip codes are not, they long distance away from a 60% threshold.
What, back, what's the target date to hit 60% before you recalculate?
At this point, but unless, unless there's a date, you know, the board would like to set, it would be before the funds expire, which would be in the summer.
So there's not a reload program, it's just when it's over, it's over? Yep. I guess I, the only thing I would say before we vote is, as you refine this, it would be nice to have a target date for achievement.
The issue I see with that, and Joe, if I'm wrong on this, let me know, but if the state reaches that 70% threshold, and I'm throwing out a date, June 28th, and the governor says, okay, we've hit the 70% threshold of vaccination, so we're going to wide-open our state. Granted, there's a lot of ifs and maybes, but if all that happened, then this would no longer really be an issue, so that date would be our new date of termination, would it not, Joe?
So I, I think if you set it up that way, then there's very good chance not, none of these zip codes, or many of them, do not hit that threshold.
Yeah, that's what I, okay.
In my eyes.
I fear that, too.
Okay.
The state rate is likely when you carry a municipal county across that threshold for getting some of these restrictions dropped, but the desire and the activities from my office don't stop when those restrictions go away. We promote vaccinations to reduce future outbreaks, and so I would see this continuing through as we continue to try to incentivize individuals to use vaccines.
Then I would not put a date on that in my.
Well, I agree 100% with Joe, and I think that the state's going to achieve their goal long before we.
Sure.
My, I guess, I'm a little parochial. I would like to see Umatilla County hit as high a level as possible, as quickly as possible, for a couple of reasons. One is safety of the citizens and the constituents, but number two, I can guarantee you that tourism in Umatilla County, or Pendleton, or any area, there's going to be people that use that vaccination percentage as a yes or no if they're going to visit that area. And I would like to see Umatilla County achieve whatever the level is as quickly as possible, because I think that's part of the reopening and the fear going away, and that's just my opinion, so.
Commissioner Doran, would you be comfortable if we wrote in an element of expediency, and even into the introduction, in terms of in order to get as many Umatilla County citizens vaccinated as quickly as possible, we're opting to go this direction?
Chairman Murdock, I'm going to vote in favor of this either way. I just want my comments to be made.
But I don't see, I don't see any downs, I don't see any downside to introducing it as a, as a plan to expedite vaccinations.
And I agree with everything you said, but my, I just don't want us to leave money on the table, I don't want it to go back to the state or feds.
And I agree with you, and I don't think they're going to second-guess our target dates, because we can move our target date if we don't hit July 30th, then we move 60 to, I mean, if we do, July 15th, we hit 60%, then we make it 70% and go to August 15th. So I think there's ways to spend the money, but.
I like, I like you the way you worded the beginning of that, the intro.
Did you hear that, Joe?
I think I missed the first part.
Well, the fact that in rolling out the program, we're going to point out rather quickly that this is being initiated in order to expedite reaching a higher level of vaccinations within the county.
Sure, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right, motion, yes, we do. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it.
Okay, Doug, shall I continue on?
Back to the foreclosed properties.
Do you want to do some bids?
You might want to rephrase that question.
There are four of these that you need to open up first, because they don't say on the outside what they're operating. So if you just open those, then that way you can get to the right one.
Is this the first one? Chair?
What do you want to say?
Yeah, probably if you just, before you do it, just see which one it is.
Would you need a pen to write down which, oh, I knew that was a testament. That's the second one. There's no trace of this at all.
Council, would you please explain what we're doing?
There were 16 properties that didn't sell at the auction, or the properties that the county foreclosed on for building a property package. And what the customary practice is of the county is to announce that the county's accepting written bids on the properties that end up and sold, and we'll put a definite timeframe on it, so in this instance, we said we did accept it through, I guess, the 18th first. This, and hopefully we will get bids on all of them, and if we don't, we'll continue allowing written bids in the future on them, but these, in this instance, I think we have, I think there might be five parcels left over after you're done. But those will be available here on out for anyone to try to submit a written bid on at any time. And so the first one that bids were received is a house in the city of Echo.
Are those all for the same property?
Those are all one property. It was pretty desirable. And this particular property at the auction was at slightly over $50,000, and so legally you can go down to 15% of that if you don't receive a bid that is actually above.
Down 15%?
Yeah, it's only a bid about 7,500.
We can go to 7,500?
Yes.
Well, that's not, that's not going to be an issue.
But I think in this case, someone said they were submitting a bid that was actually above the auction price.
Wow.
What?
They originally submitted a bid above the auction price, but I don't know.
I guess I need to organize them based on the parts and pieces.
Are they challenging the?
Well, what did you want?
Okay, council, they are organized, you might want to double-check the pieces of them, but I have it organized according to value of the bid, so.
Thank you, Robert. Are those the bidders?
Well, that's the envelope.
Yeah, curious.
So, yeah, this would be the high one.
Do I need to announce it?
Yes, you could announce it, and then if you want to take action, you don't have to, but you can.
It's tax account 108-397, it's within the identified level, it's Infinite Designs LLC of Pendleton, Oregon. The bid is in the amount of $25,240. Do you want to accept that?
I move to accept the bid submitted.
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next one is a house here in Pendleton, Tax Flap 23210, DA 7,000, under a minimum bid on it.
Wow, you want me to grab half of those and help you?
Sure.
Easier for me to compile them if they come in one piece.
Oh, you hush. Now you got me gun-shy, see how that works?
And this property at the auction had a value of $77,740, so that's about 12,000, 15%. Anything above 12,000, you can move it to this.
You would be well beyond.
I'm glad you said that, because I almost, I almost had it.
This one's stuck in here.
I think my life is a bit of a challenge.
That's what I was pointing at.
My goodness.
Do you have, do you have any more for me?
I don't.
Okay, you want to check these?
Yeah, that would be the high.
Okay, tax account 110-147, the offer is $33,333, in the name of Pearson Paul, Pendleton, Oregon.
I'd make a motion that we accept the high bid from Pearson Paul.
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, the next one is Tax Flap 23210, DB 2400, it had a minimum bid of $66,390, and this one only has one bid.
Well, that'll be easy.
It fell right to mark them, council.
Yes.
The one that.
Yeah, that's great.
And where's this one located?
This one is located South West 812, because the next one is right next door to it.
This is, so what is the minimum bid?
This is $66,000, so it can go down to just under $10,000.
Okay, this is tax account 1110-702, a bid of $25,001, Pearson Paul, Pendleton, Oregon.
Make a motion to approve the bid from Pearson Paul.
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, the next property is Tax Flap 5 South 3114, DB 1206, it is a very small piece of property, it's a portion of the vacated alleyway in Ucaya, and it had its price of $2,300 at the auction.
So wouldn't have to, so how much does it have to have?
Not much.
Thank you, that's useful.
600.
350.
I'm glad I stopped, I almost, I almost.
All right, $350. Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, tax count 1206, the amount of $350, Donald Kin's father.
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye. Did you make the motion towards on that?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
The next four parcels are four hundred and three lots in the city of Umatilla, and there are bids on all four of them, this is the first one. They all have the exact same amount on them.
You said four, there's three, or is there four lots?
Four lots.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And there were $40,600 at the auction, so that gives them about $6,090 is the potential minimum.
For the group?
Yeah. And the first one is Tax Flap 3,000.
How much did you say, six?
$6,090.
Here you go.
Maybe we should have started at the other end of the bank.
Just checking out his copy-paste abilities.
I think he started on the other.
No, it appears it. It appears that Commissioner Schaefer has subdivided them in advance.
That's called trash tonight.
Okay, we have a bid from Pearson Paul, in the amount of $7,101, that qualifies.
Yes, it does.
It's 158,279, he's in Pendleton, Oregon, okay?
Move for approval? Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next group of bids are on Tax Flap 3100.
Where did these go? Can't remember. These two parts are the.
They all have the exact same amount on them.
You said four, there's three, or is there four lots?
Four lots.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And there were $40,600 at the auction. So that gets down to about $6,090.
For the group?
Yeah. And the first one is tax lot 3000.
How much did you say, six?
$6,090.
Here you go.
Maybe we should have started at the other end of the bank.
Just checking out his copy paste abilities.
I get started on the other.
No, it appears it. It appears that Commissioner Schaefer has subdivided them in advance.
That's called fractalizing.
Okay. We have a bid from Pearson Paul in the amount of $7,101. That qualifies.
Yep, it does.
It's 158,279. He's at Pendleton, Oregon, okay?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next group of bids are on tax lot 3100.
Where did these go? Can't remember. These two parts are the winning bidder.
That one didn't have an envelope.
Those were the ones.
Oh, hand deliverers. Gotcha.
Hey, where did you say this was?
These are all unapproved lots in the city of Umatilla.
Oh, okay.
Counsel, I think this goes with that.
Nothing goes, those three go together.
So this is tax lot 3100. They're all on Wriggin Street.
It does not have the same tax account.
Okay. 3100. Oh, that's 3000. This is, uh oh.
What?
This was on the other.
They're all the same tax.
This is 3100. This is the. This is actually on the last group. It says 3000.
Is that a higher bid?
Yes.
I think it is.
This is 3400, 3300.
This was the previous one that was open for tax lot 2000. And it's for $40,699. So it would be instead of the 7101 for Pearson Paul.
3300?
This one, okay, I'm sorry, I'm confused. This is 3000 that you need to revisit.
Almost. So we're back to 3000.
$40,699.
Okay, so. Oh, wow. Wait, is that? Oh, it is the same, okay. Okay, so. We need to correct the motion. Actually.
I made the motion so I can amend it.
Okay, well, we already voted on it, so we.
Oh, you're right.
This is 3100, right?
No, this is 3000.
3000, okay.
Tax lot 3000. So, and so I guess I would make the motion that we accept the bid in the amount of $40,699 on tax account 158279.
Right, which is tax lot 3000, and that will.
Correct.
Include rescinding the previous award.
So in that motion, I also want to rescind the previous award under Pearson Paul.
Second.
This one?
Rescinded, that's the new one.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, I even cut that one in half so you know which one to pick.
Oh, I see what's wrong. It's, it looks like 3100, but it's not.
Yeah, it is. That's why I paused on that too, I was like, wait a minute.
Okay. Now.
Now it's going 3100.
Do I only have two on 3100?
That's all I have.
Okay. I said, they all come together, that's a little confusing. All right. This is 7101 on 3100, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Tax account 158280. And this is 3100 in the amount of 7101 from Pearson Paul.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This is 3300. This is $40,790. All right, counsel?
Yes, it would be the same amount.
All right, 158283. In the amount of $40,790. Ramon Ortiz and Demetela Ortiz. Uh, Umatilla, Oregon.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay.
And the next one is tax lot 3400.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Doran. Seven, $7,001.
Okay, that is about the minimum.
Okay. This is tax account 158283, $7,001. Cameron Paul. Portland, Oregon.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is a lot in the city of Weston. 23522, DB, tax lot 3400. And it was at the auction for $17,850.
Did you see the fear in his eyes as he handed that to me?
Well deserved. It's easier to process these if they're in one piece. 5,12121. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Tax account 125826. The offer of $5,121.21 by Loy and Annette Knutson of Weston.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next one is a tax lot, 23522, DB 400. And this is also, city of Weston is located just on State Street. Another unapproved lot.
I don't want him to take another swipe at him.
Get him filed quickly.
When we adopted our new procedures, motor skills wasn't on the list, was it?
And actually, I believe this is, the structure is not unapproved. Real market value was $110,280. The minimum bid would have to be above $16,500.
I can destroy the envelope. But look at that.
Three for three. All right, tax account 125865. Bid in the amount of $28,430 from David and Kathy Zentner, Hermiston, Oregon.
Move approval?
I got to recuse myself on this one.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Wait, did you second that then?
Oh, I seconded, yes.
Okay. Your mic must have cut out.
That's pretty quick.
Is that the, what was the address of that one?
Uh, that's on State Street, 317. I think that might be in the former.
Is that the one I'm thinking it is?
The what?
Uh, that's for State Street.
I don't know why they're bidding stuff over there though.
Right across the street from the city hall.
Oh, okay, okay, I know, the bigger one.
Big lot.
Then the last one. There is one bid on which she already opened. It does meet the minimum requirement. It's for the mobile home park.
Oh, wow.
Entire mobile home?
Yep. It's Lucas Mobile Home Park. And it was at the auction for just under $375,000. So the minimum bid has to be above $56,000.
About 56? All right, tech.
Before you, I don't know if you want to consider at all that you do have a request pending from the property owner to repurpose a bed also.
Did they make a formal bid?
No, they did not. They didn't bid on it. They just sent up that letter and requesting to repurpose it.
How long, how long, I mean, that's been two weeks, right? Have we heard any more from them?
Oh, yes, I mean, I've heard quite a bit more.
What would be your recommendation?
Well, I don't know if you wanted to sit on this one for a little bit to make sure that the owner realizes what they're buying. This is one of our regular bidders. They have bought other properties, so they are aware of what they're in for.
This bidder is. And this bid does qualify.
It does qualify.
And what would be the purpose of sitting on it again?
I don't know if you want to give any additional time for anything else or not.
I don't wish to.
Nor do I.
So you can go ahead.
Tax account 134846. The offer is $60,000. Hurston Sun LLC.
Chair, I move approval of that bid in your hand.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So it looks like there are four parcels that are unsold. Two of those I don't think are sellable. And so the other one might want to approach the neighboring owners to make sure they don't want it.
Okay. Do we need to take action to authorize you to do that?
No, they'll just be kept open until we get bid.
Okay.
And then they'll come back for further action.
Do you publish that listing where it is?
Yeah, it's on the county website.
Thank you, counsel, for your due diligence.
Number 11.
Number 11 is the Lifeways Transportation Services.
Did you want me to speak to that one? I can speak to that.
Yes.
Okay, so Lifeways is requesting that the state of Oregon to renew to its approval for Lifeways to be a secure transport provider. To provide transport services for person to facility, or for a person to a facility. The administrative rules require that the governing body of the county in which the secure transport is to be used submit a letter formally authorizing the secure transport provider to transport persons. It's kind of a requirement from the state. And with that, Mr. Chair, I move approval that Lifeways to approve Lifeways as a secure transport provider until the county can provide a letter of support.
Second that.
I assume you have studied this in relation to our other actions?
Yes, because they're still going to be, yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, I know. Pendleton grant application. The city of Pendleton is seeking to apply for a community development block. Oh, you can do it?
I can.
Okay.
I can read this, I can. But basically, the city of Pendleton is looking to submit an application for a community development block grant to be utilized for COVID-19 related losses for small businesses. They are seeking to have the county as a partner in this application along with the Creator of Eastern Oregon Development Corporation to actually administer the grant. The grant requires that there be two entities as the co-applicants, so that's why the county is involved. The city of Pendleton has agreed to submit the application and do the paperwork along with CEO PC. The only potential exposure for the county on this is if someone does request assistance and for some reason defaults and the county requests it back, then all of the entities do have potential liability for reclaiming of that grant. Other than that, there isn't any cost to the county.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 14, budget transfers. Mr. Paul.
Good morning, commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO. This morning, there are five budget transfers to, for you to consider. In summary, budget order 2021-72, General Fund, JAL. The JAL program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $84,000 and a decrease in contingency of $84,000. Budget order 2021-73, General Fund, Victim Witness Program. Requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $6,000 and a decrease in contingency of $6,000. Budget order 2021-74, General Fund, District Attorney. Requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $27,000 and a decrease in contingency of $27,000. Budget order 2021-75, STIF Program. Requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $50,000 and a decrease in contingency of $50,000. And finally, budget order 2021-76, Stimulus Reserve Program. Requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of this budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of $1,700,000 and a decrease in contingency of $1,700,000. Questions?
Right, who's going to do them?
We'll go. Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 2021-72?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 21-73?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 2021-74?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 2021-75?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 2021-76?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the bottom of our agenda. Comments from commissioners?
I'm for Commissioner Doran.
I have no comments today.
Thank you. I'm good.
I would just like to summary report that our first action on ARA relative to the emergency services from our staff, essential services from our staff, has been overwhelmingly adopted, accepted.
Just received, while we're in the meeting, we received another one from staff. Thank goodness.
Yeah, any number of responses.
Yeah.
Make that record, okay? Any other comments? All are adjourned.